Okay, council, it is seven P M. And we're gonna go ahead and will we have please everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present with Councilor Carson previously requesting to be excused.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval, Council V Hill.
Mayor, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Um, staff is recommending that we remove one B. Um, we were trying to make every effort to collect information and have some discussions with C dot. But we just, we've run out of time, and so we need it to be, we need a little bit more time to collect information to present the full concept to council, so we're recommending that it be delayed until the first meeting in October.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Uh, Councilor V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, I move that we approve the agenda, removing item one B. And moving it to the first meeting in October, as well as excusing Mr. Carson.
Thank you, Councilor V Hill. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, do you mean B two? I'm sorry. Like, so?
No, I mean, um, C one B.
C one B, thank you.
Yes, the discussion on the Main Street design. Thank you.
I was like, I can't find it, and it wasn't making sense. I apologize.
Okay, we have a motion, second, no further discussion, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, that's citizen comments. This is the part of the agenda where we allow citizens to come up to the podium and make your comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you are still talking within the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to um, stop your comments at that time. Um, the clock is right there, just so you know, and the first person I have is Betty Felkham. Hi.
Yeah, I would just like to make some more comments on Main Street. Um, in talking just to general people that I know, I went to go pay my rent, which I pay at Bracken Dale Realty. And there is a lady who has fallen, she's an elderly lady, on that, on those short blocks, whatever they're called. I don't know what they're called. She did file a report, and I've just had a lot of people just, people aren't happy. There's no room. I was on Main yesterday trying to get some stuff done uptown, and I almost got hit. And in, I was in this lane, and in this lane, there was a car right by me. There was nowhere to go. So I'm thankful I did not get hit, but I'm thinking, what is going to happen in the winter? And I am not the only one who's hearing these things. Um, I just hope that we can reach some kind of resolution and get this somehow fixed because snow, it ain't gonna work. There's going to be a lot of hurt people. I don't want to be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have Ruthie Brown.
Ruthie Brown, good evening, and and Matt said I could have three more minutes. Not really, but anyway, I must have the brains of a grasshopper because I told people I would come and speak up again, so um, I and many others are wondering what discussions have been held with C dot? Any correspondence and emails that should be open to the public? We're wondering if changes will be made, or rumor on the street has it, nothing will be done. Of course, rumor on the street, that's like Facebook, but um, how, how does the public know what is being discussed? Um, it has been brought up by one of the people, one of the folks, that what is the city's liability limit? What is, what is the insurance cap should someone get hurt? Um, it was pointed out to me by a citizen who spoke at the last meeting that the concrete curbs can be moved without all being broken up. It's just a matter of putting a forklift under them and lifting them. And, and I guess, some of the next comments are mine as a taxpayer, as a person with a business. And when we look at the pretty plans for beautifying the alleys, can, can we just revisit that and think why? I, I look at these alleys now, and they are so filthy, dirty, nasty, gross, disgusting. But all of a sudden, we can apply for a grant and make them beautiful? Why can't we just clean them up? Uh, keep them clean. Um, by maywaz, it's, go there, see if you would sit there where everybody's been peeing and urinating and pooping and throwing their trash. Go and look at the brick dumpster uh, containers that are cracked and have graffiti all over them. Look at the other brick dumpster container that the last time the gate was fixed was when I did it, when I and Lonnie did it, and Lonnie died a year ago. We have no pride down there, but we're gonna spend a lot of money and hang Christmas lights and tables for people to sit. Do the restaurants even have employees that could wait on people that are sitting in an alley? And where are the delivery trucks going to deliver their food? Anyway, go, go down to uh, the food bank dumpster area and see what that looks like. Go down to the uh, Rainbow's End dumpster area and see what that looks like. We talk wanting people to stop in our town, we need to clean these areas up. Clean them up before you spend thousands of dollars and people aren't happy. In closing, fourteen seconds, I ask for every ten minutes you spend downtown figuring out how to get the snow removed, that you spend two minutes on the lower downtown Alamosa because we pay taxes too.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, I'll turn it back over to uh, staff for any follow up.
Did you want to see if there is any public comments on the Zoom, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, okay, thank you. Ms. Martinez, if you could, every now and then I do forget about people on Zoom because
Yes, sir. So if you're on the Zoom app and you want to make a comment at Citizen Comment, please use the raise your hand feature um, located in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine to raise your hand.
I don't see anybody raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay, so seeing that there's, we don't have anyone with their hand raised on Zoom, so we'll now close the um, comment section and turn it back over to uh, staff for any additional follow up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as indicated when we talked about moving the agenda, we'll have a follow up discussion at the first meeting in October.
Okay, thank you. Up next, under regular business, uh, we have Main Street Advisory Committee Board Appointments. Second. Oh, I'm sorry, going a little bit fast today. Alright, Consent Calendar A. Ceremony, oh, yeah, thank you. This class is gonna work with them.
Mayor has a hot date tonight.
Okay, so we're gonna go to ceremonial, ceremonial items. Alright, introduction of a new police officers.
Mister Mayor, City Council, I want to thank you for this opportunity tonight to introduce the city's newest police officers. And just to give you all an idea of who the individuals are in the very back, um, that's our newest police academy. They just started, so they were invited to this as well. And I'm, I'm sure, I'm sorry. That's a good question. I think we started off with what, eighteen and, what are we down to? Sixteen, okay. So, and one more thing, um, before I even get into the introduction. All four of the new officers tonight are from this academy, from our local academy. So with all four of these new officers recently, they have all completed the Police Department sixteen week field training program successfully. And are now working the Patrol Division. First, I want to introduce to you Officer Jerib Aziz. Come forward. Now, I just read a little bit about you, Jerib. So Jerib was born in Long Beach, California, moved to the San Luis Valley when he was eight years old. Graduated from the Centauri High School here in the San Luis Valley. And after high school, he continued his education in criminal justice with, with Colorado Mesa University, where he also wrestled at a college level. Jerib started his law enforcement career in two thousand eighteen, where he worked for the Alamosa County Sheriff's Office in the detention center for just over two years. Jerib was hired in two thousand twenty with the Alamosa Police Department as a code enforcement officer. And recently, he was transferred to the Patrol Division with the Alamosa Police Department after graduating from the Trinidad State College, make sure I don't say junior in there, the Trinidad State College Police Academy in May of this year. Jerib is married to his wife, Brandy, and they have two children together, Ezra two and Zarek, six month, six months old currently. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give the mic to Jerib.
Good evening. Uh, like Chief said, my name is Jerib Aziz. I love being where I'm at. I'm not born and raised, but I consider I'm a Coloradan. How people say it, I guess, but um, any questions for me regarding to my position or want to know about me? I'm really, I'm really just a casual guy.
Okay, Council Grego?
I, I don't have any. I had twenty questions, but I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and just welcome you to a, to the Police Department and to the city family. I'm sure you'll do good, and it's great that we're bringing people from, from around the valley, from Centauri, and that's great. So, welcome, Jerib.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Brawls, then Council Hensley?
I was gonna say, yeah, we appreciate your interest in Alamosa, and uh, thank you for serving on our police force. You know, to me, that's the hub of Becca Lombe Development, have safety in our community, so thank you.
Council Hensley?
So I guess I am curious what your record was, was with Adam State, when you wrestled Adam State. No, I'm just joking.
Never wrestled for them.
No, you didn't wrestle at us, okay. Alrighty, I do want to welcome you, and thank you for all you do. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we wish you much success. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Officer Brett Crowther? So Officer Brett Crowther was born in Alamosa, Colorado. He graduated from Sanford High School, also in the San Luis Valley. And recently graduated from the Trinidad State College Police Academy in May of this year. Brett was one of two selected and hired with the Alamosa Police Department as a new police apprentice before his completion of the Police Academy. Brett grew up in a law enforcement family with his father, Blake Crowther, who retired from the Colorado State Patrol with nearly thirty years. And is now the undersheriff with the Canales County Sheriff's Office. Brett worked with the Canales County Sheriff's Office as a detention deputy before being hired with the Alamosa Police Department. I will turn the mic over to Mister Crowther.
Morning or good afternoon. Uh, as Chief said, I'm Brett Crowther. Um, grateful for the opportunity. I've worked for the Police Department. Feel fortunate how I got on as the apprentice and then on, on as an officer. Feel like it's kind of like a big family once you go, and it's pretty cool, so. Any questions for me?
Council Hensley, followed by Councilor Daniel.
I'm just curious because I do think the apprentice program was a new program. Um, and so sort of your feedback, just real quickly, in the sense of what advantages you might have thought that since you started as an apprentice versus coming in the more traditional way?
Um, yeah, I, so I don't think it was like as overwhelming for me as it could have been. Um, I mean, you're able to ride along. You're not really required to do anything but observe. I mean, obviously, there's some things you have to do, but um, just observing and seeing how the simple things work, I feel like puts you way further ahead than just being thrown into it.
And do you think that it also, you had a little more buy into the city? Now granted, I know you're local. But was it something where you're like, okay, this is a good fit, and it kind of reassured this is where you wanted to be?
Definitely.
Awesome, welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Daniel?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. But I just wanted to say welcome. We're really glad to have you, and especially with your family ties to another sheriff's office. I'm super glad that you picked uh, the Police Department, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Council Brawls?
I was gonna say, welcome. We like pulling good citizens out of Sanford and Alamosa, so appreciate that. And uh, again, thank you for your interest in Alamosa Police Department, and I think you'll do a great job.
Thanks.
Thank you for joining our team, and I wish you the best.
Officer Molly Henny? I'm probably saying that wrong. Close enough, right? Yeah. So Officer Molly Henny was born in Colorado Springs, Colorado, and graduated from the Air Academy High School in Colorado Springs. Molly moved to the San Luis Valley to complete her bachelor's degree in sociology and psychology with an emphasis in criminology at the Adam State University. I wanted to make sure I didn't mess that part up. During her time with Adam State University, Molly was an intern with the Alamosa Police Department during her senior year. Molly was the second of two selected and hired with the Alamosa Police Department as a new police apprentice before her completion of the Trinidad State College Police Academy in May of this year. Molly, the mic is yours.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I just wanted to thank my chief and my captain for giving me the opportunity to do this job because I've wanted to be a cop since I was probably like ten years old. I've always looked up to and admired cops my entire life. This is always something I've been wanted to, I've wanted to do, and that's why I got my degree in criminology, in psychology, and sociology. So I'm just really grateful for this opportunity. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Council Brawls, followed by Council Hensley.
Um, it's pretty hard, especially since this one's part time. You have to like have a job while you're going to, to the academy, so it's, it's pretty rough, but it's definitely, it's definitely worth it.
Well, thank you, and thanks for serving for Alamosa.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, I really enjoy having a good police force, so thanks for being part of it.
Thank you.
So also from the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're next.
I just went right down there.
You're next.
Okay. Um, also with the apprentice program, that now obviously you bring in a different perspective because you're not from the valley. Do you think that being in the apprentice program, did that help you sort of feel like Alamosa was a good fit for you? What was your thoughts from doing that program?
So for me, it wasn't the apprentice program. It was my internship when I was in college.
Got it.
So I did that for a full semester. Uh, I really, really liked it. I really liked the um, environment of a small town community and how you get to like know everybody on a more personal level. Uh, so that's, that's really what did it for me, and then the apprentice program, like Brett said, it, it was really helpful for me as well. Uh, you got to learn how to do s- small stuff that was actually really helpful when I was on F T O, like how to do reports and just watching the other officers and how they handle certain, certain situations was, was really helpful for me.
Awesome. I really appreciate that insight, and welcome as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I want to thank you for being on the P D, and if I'm not mistaken, I remember going to the academy's graduation. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you graduated in the top tier of, of the academy, right?
Yeah, so the guy who was the, the top person, I was less than a percentage point below him.
Less than a percentage point for being number one, right?
Yeah.
I remember when um, I found out you were gonna be on our team, and they mentioned uh, that you were that percentage point. I was like, yes. So, good job.
Thank you.
Wish you the best, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And last but not least, Officer Stephen Bagwell. So Stephen Bagwell was born and raised in Alamosa, Colorado. He graduated from the Alamosa High School, and after graduation, Stephen enlisted in the Colorado Army National Guard, where he honorably served for eight years. Stephen is married to his wife, Lucia, and they have two children together, Ashley, eight, and Bruce, three. Stephen graduated from the Trinidad State Junior, I keep doing it, it's still brand new to me, Trinidad State College Police Academy in May of this year.
Hello, I'm Stephen Bagwell. Um, I've served eight years Colorado Army National Guard, was out for a year, and decided, I'm not done serving my community. Um, so I decided, what else can I do to serve my community, and that was law enforcement. I'm a very big family oriented guy, and looking at everyone in here, new recruits, city council, you guys are all a part of my family now, and I appreciate that.
Okay, Council, um, I'll start this way first.
Mr. Bagwell, thank you for being part of the Alamosa Police Department. Appreciate that. Are you, any relation to the Downman Nass area?
Uh, the smaller side.
Alright, good. No, appreciate it, and thanks for being part of the Police Department. Again, uh, I, I value the Police Department, and I appreciate your willing to serve, so thank you.
Okay, Council Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Stephen, thank you for your service prior to working with us, and thank you for the service you're going to give to us. We appreciate that a lot. Um, and I, Chief, I am so impressed with the four new officers and the diversity you're bringing to the team. Just want to say thank you so much for keeping that a priority as you, as you continue to grow your team. Thank you.
And I do think we want a picture when this is done.
We most definitely want a picture when we're done, so we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute. Oh, Council Grego?
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen, uh, like uh, Council Daniel says, thank you so much for serving your country, and then your comments on how to continue serving not only uh, the country, but the, the city and that is, it's amenable. You know, so thank you so much, and welcome to the, the city family.
Thank you, Council Grego. Council V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to save my comments till everybody was uh, introduced, but Chief, you've done a great job again getting a full uh, group here. Uh, I remember coaching against Jerib in high school football. He tore us up all the time. And then I met Stephen a few weeks ago. I was out on a run, kind of pulled up on me real quick, and he scared me a little bit, but it was but the guy he was with knew who I was, so we talked a little bit, there, there, yeah. And then I, I just, just some things I heard over and over again the last ten minutes was, uh, I like how we're, we're going with local folks. Uh, the, the, the success of the apprentice program. The Adam State and T S C are all involved with this, so it's like another example of, of uh, community. Everybody working together to, to get a good police force, and to all, everybody here, thank you for your service, and just know that you have a city council up here who supports you a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Council V Hill and Officer Bagwell. Thank you again for joining our family as well. And uh, you mentioned the importance of family. Um, I encourage all of the law enforcement officers to keep in mind uh, your families, because as you go out each and every day, it's not just you out there, your family's out there with you. So I encourage you to stay close with your family as well. And Chief, good job of recruiting, and looking forward to the next round from those back there, uh, when they graduate as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, did you want them to come up so I can get a group picture?
Yes, yes. So what I would like, what, this is important. I know sometimes people don't like to talk about the pictures and things like this, but it's important that we have recognized law enforcement officers, and yes, I would like for everyone to come up here. Let's get a form, appear in form of picture. For, let's get together to take a picture. Let's do that. Alrighty, so up next, we have a Consent Calendar A. Council Grego?
I'll make a motion. We, Consent Calendar A is presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright. If not, start voting, please. Alright, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, good deal. Up next, we have, uh, under regular business, the Main Street Advisory Committee Board Appointments.
Okay, so that's me. So Council, you do have two vacancies on the Main Street Advisory Committee. You have one for the At Large Representative and one for the Hospitality Industry. Both vacancies have a term ending six one of two thousand twenty-four. So you did interview four applicants. You had two applying for the hospitality industry and two applying for that large vacancy. You conducted interviews on August eighteenth, August twenty-fifth, and September eighth. So your applicants that you interviewed were Donnie Batista for At Large, Erin Miltonberger for At Large, Mark Martinez for Hospitality Industry, and Jason Truhail for Hospitality Industry. So you do need to vote on these. Um, your ballots are up in front of you. You have one ballot for that At Large and one ballot for the Hospitality Industry, so if you can make your votes on there, and then um, I'll count them up and let you know who's, who you've appointed.
We got two comments. I believe Council V Hill, his light won't come on, and then Council Grego. So whichever one you want to go first.
I, I just had a question. Uh, when you describe hospitality, how do you fit the people in that program? Because uh, Mark, I, and I like, love Mark, and I have known his family, he's more of a distributor type of person. Uh, making beers and stuff and, and selling them. I'd like to distribute. So how would you, how would you classify that as hospitality?
I think they have the, they have a same type of customer interaction as a bar or a restaurant. And so that's what the hospitality is. But their business has customers that are similar to a bar.
Well, you, you can go and taste and then buy stuff and take it home, correct?
That's correct for their liquor license, but I think the intent of what these positions are is the type of business, not necessarily related to the type of liquor license they're holding.
I'm just confused because I, I think that uh, he's in the wrong area there.
We don't have the positions broken out by different types of liquor licenses. It's, um, we have the hospitality, which is kind of like the restaurants, hotels, we've got retail, and then property owners, and then At Large, and then one council member.
I guess what I would say is it's not a legal question, but since he's on the ballot as a hospitality industry member, we're going to create all kinds of confusion if we try to reclassify him at this point.
And my question is quick. Do we have any type of, um, like a backup, like a, if someone can't make a meeting and we, like a reserve, an alternate? And if not, can we make one?
You don't currently. Um, I don't know if you want to do that. If you would want to maybe re-advertise because it could be, since these were advertised for very specific purposes, there may have been more interest if it was going to be just a general backup. But you, that is not a position. It is within council's prerogative if you want to add a backup. We haven't really needed it, I can tell you that.
Well, your committee's established pursuant to a resolution that set it up. So if it didn't set it up with an alternate member, you would need to amend the resolution before you appointed an alternate.
I was getting to that. So thank you, city attorney.
Everybody's good? Okay. Alright, Ms. Martinez, how do you want us to do this? Just hand you both of them? Okay.
Counsel Heather did have a copy of the resolution, which I was trying to scramble and find my, uh, electronic files for. And your resolution states that it, it lists the eight different members by category and then states council may, in its discretion, add additional members, including members who are not representative of any of the above groups and may decline to appoint any member from any of the above groups. So really, you, your resolution left you as much flexibility as you want.
So.
I, I would say the first part of what I answered though, however much weight you want to put on that, but, but we did not advertise for just anybody. It was very specific for the two vacant positions. So I cannot tell you if there's other interest for, from other people who would maybe want to serve.
I understand, I understand what you're saying with that. I just, I'm going to be honest, Counsel, the, the hospitality choice for me was like 50/50. It was one A, one B. And I think if whoever gets it, gets it and the other person, we put as a, as the alternate. That's my thought.
Counselor Grego.
And I, and I agree because when you have, uh, applicants like that wanting to serve, you know, I hate turning anybody away. And I think the two people for, for the hospitality, I think would have some really great input to this committee, you know? And I, I, I would like to see if, if it, if there is a way to maybe even put them both on or whatever. I think that I would like to go that direction. And I'm the alternate for the, uh, this is the, the council, uh, appointing and I'm the alternate on that, so.
Okay, Ca- Ca- thank you, Counsel Grego, Counsel Veehl, uh, Counselor Hensley?
So, I guess I, honestly, for me, all four are good. So if we're going that route, I don't like just picking one out of the four. And so I guess my thought is, is personally is maybe just let's go forward the way we are and let's then o- open up one or two alternate positions. And then, and then obviously whoever may not have made it could apply as well as others is to serve. Because I guess for me, it's hard to pick one out of one of them and not one out of the other two.
Uh, Counselor Daniel?
Um, I'm in agreement with Counselor Hensley on that, that we should, if we are going to open it up to alternates, we, and we could allow anybody then who wants to apply to apply, including whoever the two were that weren't chosen today.
Now, I'm just curious, how many people on that committee right now?
Sorry, there's eight members, but obviously we were down two, so. But the total number is eight.
Total number of eight? When we fill these two, will it be eight or will it be 10?
Well, actually, thank you, Mayor. So it's eight and then we have two ex officio, so it's actually a 10-member, um, committee already.
Okay, already. So is there, so how, would that bring us? So you all, what are you saying on, up here on council? Are you just saying, well, you want all four people to be on, on this committee? Or you just want to say that the two that selected tonight and then open up the other, uh, another position for people to run for an alternate?
Right. So people who could also apply to be alternate since we only are taking the people who applied for these two specific positions.
That, what everybody's saying? Okay. Is that what, is that what, that's not what you're saying? So go ahead. Go ahead, talk into the mic.
Liz brings out a good point, you know? I, I think that there would be, uh, there would be, uh, bring out four on. But I, I, I can see when, when if you start making a big, a bigger committee, it's kind of hard. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you did have a tie in the hospitality industry. So if you want to vote again, then we'll try and see if that breaks the tie or not. And then for your at-large, um, Erin Miltonberger is who you guys voted for. So I'll need you to do a voice vote to appoint him. Do we want to wait for the hospitality until you have seven members to where then there's a tiebreak? Because unless someone's going to be changing their votes.
That's right.
We, we can do that. I just, so we can see if there's any changes. And so I think the city clerk mentioned she does need a voice, um, vote recommending Erin Miltonberger.
Okay, counsel, uh, seems like, uh, the majority voted on Erin Miltonberger. Go ahead, if we could take a motion?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. I move that we appoint Erin Miltonberger to the Main Street Advisory Committee as an at-large. And we hold off on the hospitality vote until the first meeting of October.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Alright, do you want these back? Alrighty. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. The discussion of, I tell you what. Did we remove that, Heather?
I, I think we're on the update from the Main Street Advisory Committee.
Yeah. Okay, there we go. C18. So do we have the update?
So with us tonight is Matt Abbey. He is our Chair of the Main Street Committee. And he's just going to provide an update. And I think this might be one of our first ones, but, um, council had wanted our different advisory boards just to come on a rotational basis, just to provide an update on what they've been working on. And so that's what Mr. Abbey is here for.
Thank you so much.
You need to turn your mic on if there's a little person. There you go.
Testing. Cookies. Hi, everybody, Matt Abbey, um, Main Street Advisory Committee Chair. Thanks for the time, thanks for the invite, I appreciate it. Yeah, I share some of your sentiment with regard to the applicants for the, for the positions. Those were four really solid members of town, so that's a tough one. Not surprised there's a split on that. Don't lose any sleep over it. We'll figure it out. It'll be okay. The, uh, Main Street Advisory Committee, um, uh, in addition to cookies, we concentrate on what kinds of things we can do to help, uh, improve downtown quality of life, quality of business, um, make things a little easier for shoppers, for citizenry, uh, for the overall appeal. We, uh, tend to follow along the, uh, downtown plan that was published a few years ago in terms of, uh, guiding our conversation and what sort of things we think or would like to advise be focused on next. Uh, the big, very popular one, of course, is already done, so we're not going to talk about that. But, uh, Ruthie did a great job of lining me up for the next topic, and that is the alleyways. At the last meeting, we kicked around what sort of topics we want to discuss and brainstorm on for following meetings, trying to come up with some, some thoughts and some recommendations. And the alleyway activation as part of the adopted plan, um, is on the list. Now, the overall program is, uh, the total package is going to be pretty expensive and we expect it to take some time. There are some low-hanging fruit options that the advisory committee is, uh, contemplating um, in terms of alleyway cleanup. Um, is it possible to get the street sweeper down it once in a while? Can we build corrals for the dumpsters and cloister those behind some decorative brick walls? They don't have to be fancy, but they should be appealing and clean. Uh, what can we do with regards to, um, a hoped-for future redevelopment of some city parking lots? And how do we connect those to our emphasis streets, our heritage street, our festival street? Do we do use lights? Do we use paint? Do we use pavers? What can we do with the ingenuity and the elbow grease that exists in town to help move the plan forward without breaking the budget? Maybe break it a little bit. So that's sort of the direction the, uh, the conversation has been going, um, the last few meetings. Uh, there's also some movement in cooperation, uh, with Kale's group in the local marketing district and with respect to improving downtown signage, uh, finding little easier places for trucks and RVs and travel trailers to park when they come to town. Um, working on the, sort of the readjustment, social readjustment to the, to the parking reality downtown with the, uh, with the growth of, of, uh, some of the local businesses and Friday Health plans. Um, that's kind of what we've been mulling over and, uh, trying to come up with some, some thoughtful ways forward to, to, to help us help you execute on the plan. Questions?
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Abbey. Uh, I'll go ahead and start with Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Grego.
Yeah, my question is, is parking? Does downtown need more parking?
Oh, I don't know, David. You know, I'm not a very good audience for that, so I tend to stay out of the parking conversation. Um, I grew up in a bigger city and so my opinion is we don't have a parking problem if you have to, you know, if you can find a parking spot within two blocks. Um, the reality is, um, as tight as downtown currently is, parking was added. Um, I know that, uh, some city staff have been working on a couple of parking lot redevelopment schemes that, in my opinion, look pretty good. I think, you know, when the time's right, they'll, they'll probably come um, to, to, to better layout and take advantage of existing parking. We have a lot of parking on our four main block side streets up and down. Um, it's pretty congested in the neighborhood of Maine and San Juan in terms of parking, but that's because there's a huge influx of office workers there. And it's going to take a little time, you know, for there to be adjustment. Tammy, when she goes to the hobby shop, she just parks over by Big John's, uh, to stay out of the parking inclusion, also to make sure that those spots are available for, you know, tourists and visitors and customers. It's what they're there for. It's definitely tighter than we're used to. I'm, problem might be a little strong word, in my opinion.
I also think, um, Friday Health is working on coming up with dedicated parking for the growth that they're having from an employee perspective.
They are.
That should help alleviate a little bit of the issue.
Yeah, I just, I just counted, when we had a public comment, I counted like 53 times people mentioned parking.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Grego?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, back when we were doing the study and we were talking about the alleys, there was a couple of people that brought up the fact that when we look at the alleys, we take in consideration the people on wheelchairers and handicap. Is that something that you guys will keep in mind when we start restructuring and stuff?
Yeah, actually, so I've been living quite a bit of my life in the, in the alleyway between the appliance store and the hobby shop the last couple of months. I'm terribly intimately familiar with that two blocks now. Um, it's all pretty level right through there. Um, and certainly it's, it is a design consideration when it comes time to talking about designs. Also, in terms of access, uh, delivery vehicles were mentioned. Um, you know, we just put doorbells on the back of, of our businesses. UPS shows up, hits the bell and gets the boxes and they're gone, look at it, split. Um, I think there's way to accom- place to accommodate that. I don't know if we're to the point where closing the alleys and making them pedestrian only is may, yeah, it's not really part of the conversation yet. There could be a day. They do that in a lot of cities where, you know, delivery till 11:30 and then the dining tables go out. Hopefully, we get to see that day. I'd like to see that day. But that's pretty far down the road in terms of density and business and traffic.
And Counselor Grego, I think some alleys are in better conditions than others. Um, I know we oftentimes, the alleyway behind Alamosa Home, um, tends to get some potholes and, and some issues there. So, um, unfortunately, given what we need to do to move from a stormwater perspective and some of the utilities, really providing a good fix for that gets to where it's the more expensive stuff.
Yes, that's why we're focusing on, on the low-hanging fruit.
Thank you. Any other? Sorry, I didn't see it. Counselor Veehl?
Thank you, Mayor. My question also was on the alleyways, Matt. Is, uh, are, is there, and then it's, it's probably a long-term goal like you guys are talking about, but is there talk with some of the merchants down there of opening their, the back of their business for alleyway interaction and access?
There hasn't been much discussion about that. Um, I can bring it up. The appliance building will be open back and front. I mean, I used to use Penny's as a way to get through. A question that probably needs to be asked is, how did Penny's feel about that? Um, but if you're a merchant, you want to maximize your opportunity. So, you know, there's, uh, that's something to take into consideration. Hobby shop, I don't have the back open because Tammy's there by herself a lot and covering both doors, um, with respect to shrinkage and that kind of thing, you know, isn't, isn't a real possibility. I think the chances of someone stuffing a washing machine down their shirt and running out the door is somewhat slimmer.
Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Matt, thank you so much for sharing with us. Um, when Counselor Veehl spoke, he, he made me think of something. As a member of the Main Street Committee, how often do you talk to the other merchants downtown that are not on the Main Street Committee so you can bring their voices forward?
So I was walking down the street the other day and who are the people in your neighborhood? I think that was Sesame Street started rolling through my head. I probably shouldn't admit that on the record, but that, it happened. And, um, so I talked to Joe at my brother's place just about every day. Jason Trujillo, a couple of times a week. Let's see, who else? All of them. I mean, just with the, the miles I'm putting in, me personally. Uh, I talked to the Demlo's today. You know, they're next-door neighbors. Uh, and I see Andy Trujillo every once in a while and, and talk to him when I'm there. There's a pretty satisfied vibe, kind of coming off of the thing. Again, in my opinion, I tend to have sort of a neutral rosy view of things. Um, but, um, that's sort of what I'm feeling. Um, business is good, traffic is good.
Okay, Matt, thank you. Matt, I just have a final question. If you, if you could share with us, could you give us a visual description of how you feel, uh, the people in the committee would, uh, how they feel downtown will be three years from now? If they're able to implement some of the things that you're, you're working on?
There's enthusiasm for the plan. Um, everybody recognizes, I think, that there are portions of the plan that in time will have to be adjusted or imperfect. That's, that's part of the process. As I said in my comments a month and a half ago, we can rely on ourselves to adjust when adjustment is required. I think it's, I think it's our turn. There's, the sense I get is that downtown is finally popping. There's nothing leasable or purchasable on Main Street. Um, the side streets are filling out into, uh, in so, some of the other places that have been vacant for a long time. And, uh, and so I feel like we're entering sort of a golden, golden era for downtown Alamosa where it's our turn to be cool and drink a beer on the sidewalk and talk to your neighbors and, and, uh, and have business and have things happen. I really do. I just, I'm pretty, pretty high. I'm pretty, pretty high on it at the moment. Probably higher than the rest. That's what I'm on the committee.
That is good. Keep that going. Keep that going. Counselor Hensley?
So I would like to add, so as the city council rep on this committee, it is a great committee to be on. The energy is fantastic, lots of brainstorming, lots of just sort of that idea of throwing things out there, some things stick, some don't. And it is that idea that everybody comes in, and I'm not going to say always that everything is a hundred percent awesome, but they all come in with a very positive outlook to this committee and what can we do to make things better. And so sometimes there's those difficult discussions and sometimes, but the idea is that it really is the idea of focusing in on how to make things better. And so it's really a very positive committee, which is really nice to be a part of.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. No other comments? Thank you so much, Mr. Abbey. We really appreciate you sharing that update with us.
Sure, thanks for the time.
All right, you are. Okay, so now we're on the back page. Finally, I think I'm in the right spot. Okay. We're going to be item C one B now. First reading of ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending amending the established pay plan for the city officers and employees in accordance with Article three of section eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. As council is aware, the twenty twenty-one adopted budget included funding to hire a consultant to conduct a compensation analysis. The last compensation analysis occurred in twenty fifteen. So it was important for us to have an understanding of what the market looked like for our, all the different positions within the, within the city. Based on some vacancies, turnover and some other indicators, we kind of had an idea that some positions were probably going to see some needed changes and that we were not consistent with the market. We hired McGrath Consulting Group, and it was important to have an objective outside agency in order to ensure that it was an objective and fair process. McGrath started the process by holding multiple meetings, not only with administration, but with every single department head and their leadership team, trying to get an understanding of the operations and what they were seeing from turnover and compression, attraction, retention, those types of things. Also, based on those discussions, a list of twenty-seven comparable organizations was used to identify what the market is. They went and they collected information and wanted to do an average, which means fifty percent of the market would pay more and fifty percent would pay less. Additionally, each position was asked to complete a thirteen-page questionnaire combined with the job description. That was also put through a rating factor on how to be placed in the pay plan. And so there's a few other things that could impact the placement, but those were the two big heavy hitters, was the market and that position questionnaire slash job description. All of that information and the recommendation for the new pay plan was presented to both employees and city council on August twenty-fifth. Employees were also allowed to appeal the placement of their position or their title. And we did receive ten appeals that are currently pending right now. If council approves the pay plan tonight, if there's any changes that come out of those appeals, we will have it in time for the second reading. The implementation includes three type of increases. The first type of increase is if the pay plan has shifted and an employee is no longer within it, it includes an increase to get the employee up to the new minimum. So that's the first type of increase. The other consideration that the consultant identified is because we have not given pay for performance increases since twenty eighteen, we've had to focus on COLA, so we've given increases, but it was shifting the whole pay plan, but nothing for pay for performance. We were seeing a lot of compression at the beginning areas. So we were having some employees with three or four years of experience getting paid the same as a new employee with that compression. So the other type of increase is based on the years of service, there's a few percentage increases to try to help move those longer-term employees further away from the beginning. And then lastly, since this will be the only increase that employees get for twenty twenty-two and they only received a one-point-five because we were unsure of how revenue would perform in twenty twenty-one, we wanted to make sure that if there is a newer employee, so they're not going to get much for years of service and maybe they were not outside the pay plan, we wanted to make sure that they're at least getting a two percent increase. And so I think there is one or two employees that would be impacted with that. There are two positions that are not included in the pay plan, but information was collected on the market, and that is for the city manager and the municipal judge. Both of those positions fell within what would be a market range, and so they would only be eligible for years of service increases. And so the pay plan and the ordinance before you tonight would implement this January first, twenty twenty-two. And it is first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay, counsel. Counselor Hensley?
Well, if there's no discussion, I appreciate the due diligence that was done on this and all of the effort and the time that was taken. And I actually really appreciate that we used an outside company to really make it so there was no bias. And so I think we've put a lot into this, and I feel really proud of what you've presented. So what I would recommend is then I go ahead and move that we approve ordinance number sixteen twenty twenty-one on the first reading, amending the employee pay plan and set that matter for a public hearing in second reading on October sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have some further discussion. Counselor Grego?
Yeah, I just want to thank the city manager. I've worked with five different city managers, and you've been, yet, one of the ones that takes care of the, our employees work hard and they need to be treated fair. And whatever the market is asked, is out there, I think they should be getting that, you know? So I appreciate the fact that you have done this and that we take that into consideration. The employees, like I said, they work so hard for this community and they should be treated fair.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. And if I might add to that, too, in a climate to where we have a lot of businesses struggling to find good employees, it's good that the city is being proactive and finding ways to retain the people we have and make sure that they're adequately compensated. And when we take on a task like this, even if some of the employees don't receive the amount that they feel they believe they deserve, what happens is at least they know that it's fair. It's not that we're being biased or not trying to pay someone. We have reached out to third-party individuals to give us positive feedback. So thank you all, and thank you, council. And another thing I think is important, I think a lot of times people think that we just haphazardly make up a mind to do certain things. That doesn't happen. It takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot of research. It takes a lot of work on all of our parts to come across and have a decision. So I just want to use this time to thank council and staff for all of the extra work that you put into this and let the community know that we do think before we make a decision. Thank you. We have a motion, second. No further discussion. Okay, we could start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. The first reading of ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance adopting, adopting a provision on rolling coal. I believe that's one of those Eric type of.
That is one of those Eric types of things. And let me actually just give you a little background about how it came to be beyond what was set forth in the novice communication. I had a conversation with a very personable young man who was cited for exhibition of speed. And he talked about the officer having told him also that he was violating state statute on rolling coal. He had a diesel pickup and had flirted for about a half a block and blown black smoke all over the place. And he asked me whether that was really a thing. And I told him it was, and I went and looked in the model traffic code for it, and lo and behold, it's not there because it is not in the model traffic code, it's in the state code. And it's not in the state analog to the model traffic code. It's actually placed in the state code under the emissions kind of public health control stuff. And so that caused me to think that it's a much more appropriate, if something like that is going to be enforced, cited and enforced, to do that through municipal court rather than trying to do that through state court. And so this ordinance creates a municipal ordinance analog of that state statute. The, as the novice communication sets forth, the difference between the proposed ordinance and the state statute is the addition of the words nuisance or, in other words, you blow smoke in such a manner as to create a nuisance or hazard, whereas the state statute says just blow smoke in such a manner as to create a hazard. And as I set forth in the alternatives, council can take that or leave that or take the whole ordinance or leave the whole ordinance. Unless you've got any questions, I think that covers it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suezao. Okay, Counselor Grego?
Counselor, how are we going to get the word out there about this? Because I see it all, you know, especially downtown, you're sitting out there. Here comes this diesel truck, and whoa, and like you said, for about a whole block, here's all this smoke going all over the place. How are we going to tell these people that is illegal?
Well, I think it's going to, I think it's going to be the same way in which our police department deals with all of these newer things. And again, this is nothing new. This is in-state statute. But, you know, you have a very good, a police department that is very good in terms of engaging with citizens and educating them rather than just writing tickets. And I'm sure that's what will occur. And this young man has told his father.
What did you say? I didn't hear you. The young man did what?
I said this young man who brought this up to me has told his father about it. His father was amazed to hear.
Okay, thank you. So, counsel?
Mayor, if there's no other comments, I move that we approve ordinance number seventeen dash twenty twenty-one and set it for a public hearing on October sixth at seven P M or soon thereafter.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Abigail. All righty, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty-one. Is that you also?
It is, Mayor. It is. This ordinance comes about as a result of the action, I think, back in twenty eighteen. Council decriminalized the bulk of ordinances in the city code, leaving a handful, I think maybe eleven, that were criminalized. In other words, where jail is a possibility for a violation of the ordinance. And state law doesn't, back up. The code has always provided that if the offense that you're charged with is a jailable offense, you are entitled to a jury trial if you request one. State law says, doesn't matter whether it's a jailable offense under your municipal code, if it's a jailable offense under the state law analog, you're entitled to a jury trial, even though there's no possibility of going to jail under the code because it's not jailable under the code. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but there are multiple cases affirming that that is indeed the law. Typically, wouldn't be a problem, but we've had two jury requests in the last three months for what I would consider very minor violations. They're certainly considered to be very minor under our code. They are not jailable. And those requests result in an entire day devoted to that trial, whereas because these are such simple offenses, a typical municipal court trial lasts anywhere from twenty minutes to at most an hour. Requires an entire day, takes the entire day out of sixty citizens who come to serve on the jury. Well, not the entire day, that half of them get dismissed before lunch, or most of them get dismissed before lunch. But it's, it's a big imposition for something that logically doesn't go with that. And so what this ordinance does is says, well, if you, if your offense is not jailable under municipal ordinance, but you elect to have a jury trial because it is jailable under a, under a analog state ordinance, now it's going to be jailable under the municipal ordinance. You know, if you're making your jury request on the basis that this is jailable, well, then it's going to be jailable. And frankly, the idea is to provide some balance to whether or not a defendant chooses to request a jury trial. It's really a lopsided decision at this point. So, any questions for me? I'm happy to answer, but that's the background.
Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Suzo, thank you for this. I, I feel like I got a little lost in what you said and what I'm reading in the council communication. So part of this ordinance that you're proposing is to clean up language because it says like, we cannot simply avoid providing a jury trial under this section by reporting to decriminalize an ordinance that has a counterpart in the state criminal statutes. So that's one piece of this?
Yes, and I didn't mention that, so thank you. That's right. Right now, as our ordinances read, we don't provide the opportunity for a jury trial unless it's jailable under the municipal code. That's the way the ordinance reads. We got to fix that no matter what we do.
Okay.
I think.
Okay, and then the other part that we want to say is if it is not jailable as a state statute and not jailable as a municipal one, then there's no jury trial. No, I said that's what I messed up. Thank you.
That's the way it currently is.
Okay.
So this ordinance would not change that. What this ordinance changes is if it's not jailable as a municipal ordinance, but it is jailable as a state ordinance, you get a jury. And what this ordinance says is, okay, if you're picking a jury, then it's going to be jailable under the municipal ordinance, too.
Then, so what, then we wouldn't have to change every ordinance. It would just be if the analog is jailable at the state, then automatically if you request a jury trial, it could be jailable.
It could be. Your sentence could include jail if you were found guilty.
If you were found guilty. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I, I was trying to, you keep on talking, talking about not jailable. So, for example, if I go and I get, I shoplifted for ten dollars and I can request for a jury trial at ten dollars?
Three dollars. That's happened before, yes.
Oh, my God. Because you keep on talking about not jailable.
Well, it's not jailable under the city code. The city code can't throw you in jail for that right now. And we're not going to change that. The city code will still say it's not jailable. But if you elect to have a jury, because it is jailable under the state statute, then jail's on the table for you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I've been thinking about this. I'm, I am struggling with if it's originally not jailable, changing that because they're asking. And I get the, I get the minimum offenses, and so I understand that I do think it would also be, there is a resource issue there, but I also think there's a fairness issue that I am concerned about if we take away the jury trial. Or sorry, if we, if we add the jailable option to places we wouldn't normally jail them in our statute, I don't, I don't think I can agree with that. I agree with fixing the part that needs to be fixed and not like just avoiding a jury trial. But I do not necessarily agree with the, the other half of it. And so I just wanted to say that out loud, team.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego?
There's no further questions, I'll make the motion. We approve on first reading ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty-one. Set it for a public hearing on October sixth at seven o'clock or sooner after.
Anybody go second? So no one wants to second it?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Kind of going off your comment, Ms. Daniel, Eric, if, if we take that piece out about that they could request the jury, if we take that If we take that away, does that go against their constitutional right?
We're not taking that away. They can request a jury. It's just that if they do so, what was non-jailable now has a potential. Jail sentence as a possible sentence if they're found guilty. But they certainly they're entitled to request a jury.
Counsel Hensley.
So I'm thinking about this. And so in a sense, you're. I don't think it's meant to be, but it's almost like a threat that if you ask for a jury, then you're actually. Going to be punished more.
That's a way to say it. It's it's really making it, it's making it commensurate because you're asking for a jury and the only reason you're entitled to one. Is there's possibility of jail as a punishment. If you had been charged under the state statute, which you weren't because it's a piddly little offense, and so you were charged into municipal court. But if you want to turn it into. A federal trial, then you need to look at the consequences of what that would be. That's that's the logic. So when you talk about fairness, it's an attempt to. Provide some incentive for people to play. The municipal court. Game by the municipal court rules where the state statute. In essence, takes that away.
Do other municipalities do this?
I am not aware. Other municipalities certainly balk. At the problem because this comes up on the attorney list serve. Um, not infrequently and uh. I keep, when it comes up, I keep citing to sort of the the case that says, yeah, you got to provide a jury trial. Uh, but I'm not aware of any other municipalities that have taken this approach. I don't, but by the same token, we are. In the minority of municipalities that have decriminalized their code. So most municipalities jail is still an option for shoplifting.
Okay, and then, and I'm sorry, I'm really just thinking of this process. So um. Are we finding that are people doing the jury trial just to be a pain in the neck?
That would be my conclusion, yes. In order only not only to be a pain in the neck, but to try to negotiate. A better plea agreement. Um, because of holding the threat of taking. A day out of the court schedule, my schedule, and sixty potential jurors' schedules.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Counsel Brawls.
No, I I see it the way our city attorney sees it. If uh if a person's going to drag the city through a. Jury by by trial by jury. And he knows that he's guilty. And he's doing it just to be obstinate. There needs to be a consequence. And that consequence is, okay, if you're going to do that and you're found guilty, then you're going to go to jail. Uh, and and, you know, jury trials are very expensive and take a lot of time. So there's got, there's got to be a consequence. For those people who just want to drag. Uh, an issue on. Uh, either to get a better plea bargain or to say, oh, well, okay, I'm just going to be. Obstant, I'm just going to drag the city through a trial. Uh, so, you know, there's got to be that that element in there. Uh, if a person really believes that he's innocent. And he, you know, and wholeheartedly believes he's innocent, he can go to the jury trial. But I think nine times out of ten, it's those people that they know they're guilty and they're just trying to prolong. Uh, the agony or just try to try to be obstinate. So that's why I look at it.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Counsel Brawls. Counselor Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I I think I have a little bit different perspective than Counselor Brawls, and I and I think the the person, so he or she or they who is in a. Situation where they may. Be interested in having a jury trial because they don't, I don't feel like people. Intentionally do things to be obstinate. If they really think they're innocent, they're not like, I don't know, I just I struggle. I believe people want the best for themselves and not just to be a pain in the neck. Like I I really do. Believe that most of the time. There are the people who sometimes do that, but I I don't think that that's the majority of people. Um, and so. I really, I I feel. Challenged by changing. Our practice because someone requested something that I believe is their right um by increasing the punishment that could come because they've requested something that. Is available to them. Um, and I know it's like I do, I know that there's a challenge, but I I struggle with shifting our potential punishment. Or consequence, even if it's not a punishment, the potential consequence to being jailable when we decided that some of these were not. Not jailable and we did that for a reason, counsel. And so um. I I, yeah, I would struggle with keeping keeping that as as part of that. Although I do hear the obstinate thing, and I do hear that there are challenges, like I'm not. Debating that that doesn't happen sometimes, but I honestly believe most people wouldn't put themselves through that or others unless they felt that they needed to.
Thank you, Counsel Daniel. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so. The and this may be opening a whole different can of worms, but I'm just thinking out loud. So if it's something that we're saying potentially could be jailable. Can we then say that again back on our, to say that this can be a jailable offense and obviously, I mean, so that it's a legitimately. Jailable offense. I I and I'm not sure if that's, but I I guess that that then that is really. And I guess maybe it's something that we know in municipal court, we're probably not going to use it unless it's an extreme. But then it is really on the books for that so that it's not looking back. I don't know.
I I think part of the reason you guys went through this was there was also the change at the state level of. Needing to make sure we're paying for defense attorneys. And so if you if we didn't remove some of the jail when it was most likely not going to be jail, then we. We were adding potentially to the process and with costs and and those types of things. And so um. On this situation, this should normally be outlier. Type of situations. It's unfortunate that we've had two within the last three months. I'm not sure you want to reopen that can of worms. Because of the other implications.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Counsel start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports? Light up your light. No committee reports. Alright, that brings us to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my announcements are mostly just the reminders um for what's coming up. Um, September sixteenth, uh, so I believe that is tomorrow. It's been a long night. Um, at five thirty, we have the mom trail grand opening and we're excited. The funder will um hopefully be here. And we can show some appreciation for for that contribution and allowing us to open up a trail system in a part of town that. Um, we haven't had the trails yet, and it's tying into much larger projects. So that's very exciting. Um, we have our arts festival both this Friday and Saturday, and we're excited about that. We also, you should have received an invitation, two invitations, Jasmine and Holly. Um, for Friday night at four thirty at Society Hall for the artist reception. It's. Our way of saying thank you, not only to the artists who we rotate out the outdoor artwork. But we've also folded in the artists who are participating in the art walk. And um, so it's exciting to to be able to say thank you for their participation. On Friday, September seventeenth, we also have our monthly volunteer cleanup at the Saint Benedict campsite. And next week, several of us will be attending Wednesday through Friday, the CML annual conference. This is all before your next regular meeting, so just make sure we cover this. You do have a special meeting um on September twenty ninth to finish your um evaluations of the municipal judge and city manager. And on the fifth, the day before the next meeting is meet the candidates forum. Um, and that is here at six thirty. So. A lot of things happening between now and your next regular meeting.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Brooks. Alright, so we're going to go ahead and move on down the agenda to um consent calendar B. Counselor Beal.
May I move that we approve consent calendar B?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to the final part of the agenda, uh, council comments, Counselor Brawls and Counsel Hensley. And.
I do want to go into the budget. I do want to thank the city manager. And uh. Our finance director for an excellent job on the budget. Uh, asking my questions, I think I got ahead of myself, but uh, you know, that it's it's a pretty complex thing to do. And there's a lot of moving parts, and I appreciate what you have done. And, you know, I agree with nine percent of the budgets. It's a, it's a good budget. And I really thank uh, I want to thank Lisa for preparing that summary. By Department of General Finanziers. That helped a lot, so. Uh, I I I appreciate that. So I do want to say the city's done a great job of preparing the budget, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brawls. Counsel Hensley.
Um. I actually, I just wanted to share, I felt like when we started our meeting and we had the sixteen um. Police candidates or uh ones from the police academy in the back and then the four new. Um, police officers that have joined our force. It was just a really positive experience. And it's nice in light of. I guess all the negative negative negativity and things like that to see um that strength within the police force, especially here in Alamosa. And so Chief, I just wanted to tell you that I think that you're doing a great job. I think it shows something for our city. And so hopefully we keep that positive outlook and that support um for our police department. So, but it was really, it was a great warm feeling to see all that. So thank you.
Okay. We're going to go, we're just go down the road.
Just a question, Heather, did anybody attend that public budget meeting last week?
Unfortunately not. Um, we will be putting the PowerPoint on the website, but the other is that that um. Software you authorized us to use is much more front user friendly. Um, so it will allow the public to to dig into the budget and and do those types of things as well. And so. Once we can go live with that, um, we can do some promotion of it and and those types of things as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I I just wanted to point out that when we pulled the discussion on Main Street design. You know, we had this big attendance. You know, and I I met the city manager. I said, let's make sure that we. Because people think that we're not going to do nothing about this, you know? So I I think it's important that everybody understands that we still haven't put together all the pieces. You know, so we can look at a a a real good picture of what we exactly we're going to do. So I think it's so important because, you know, people are saying that we're not doing. It's falling on deaf ears, and it's not going to fall on deaf ears here. And also I think it's so important that people know, and I'm these two young ladies have left before that, something is going to be done. And, you know, it it'll it'll, you know, when you do something new like that, it takes time to accept and and time, you got to fiddle with it until it works. And safety is the number one thing I think that we need to look at. And it it's something that I think it, you know, with time, we'll we'll get it right.
Thank you, um, Counsel Grego. Um, Counsel Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. So my my comments to start with were going to be similar to Counsel Grego, so I won't um can. You know, repeat what he said. I am looking forward to the discussion on the sixth, though, and having that like. Discussion as with as much information as possible between C dot and us. Like, I'm really hoping that they can get back to you and that it's timely. Um, because I think waiting longer than that will not be okay for our our community. Um, the other piece is I have now talked to several families and students and people who are now no longer able to be in their classrooms because of COVID and lots of quarantines. And things like that that are happening in our community. So I just want to. Talk like just say, just take care of yourselves and take care of each other. It's a stressful time. Um, we're still struggling with with COVID and we're still struggling with trying to support um where we need to support and support each other and and people are tired. Um, so tired of wearing masks and so tired of having things shut down and so tired of. Needing to move their schedules around so they can quarantine their children and like they're tired, which means that we are grumpy. Um, and so please take care of yourselves and each other as we go through this because it. We're not through it yet. And so just be as patient and civil as we can be with each other. Um, because it's not gonna, it's not getting easier right now. Um, and so I hope that it does. I'm looking forward to when it does, but. You know, just take a breath and and try to put yourself in the other person's shoes before you yell at them, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I'll just wrap things up. I would just like to, I would end on a positive note. Uh, there are a lot of good things that are going on in the city, even though there's a lot of negative uh, you know. Stuff going around, um, that some of it is unfounded, but uh it's good to see. The positive things that are going on, like the different festivals that we've been having, our musics and bands playing on San Juan. Uh, and seeing the tent set up there and to see people come from all parts of the state, just our little community, Alamosa. Uh, to enjoy the beautiful things that we have here in Alamosa. So um. Thank you, everyone, for making our community a beautiful community where people really do want to come and visit. And actually stop at our downtown stores. Thank you and have a good night, everybody. This meeting is adjourned. Welcome. Thank you.